You heard JT?
Paul, El Reno Airport Authority Regular Meeting on January 9, 2018 at 5:30. Start roll call with, uh, Trusty Ryder.
Here. Trusty White?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Trusty Cronister? Chairman Rogers?
Go on to consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the El Reno Airport Authority and will be enacted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on any item, the item will be removed from the consent agenda, considered separately. Number one, approval of the minutes of the December 12, 2017 regular meeting of the El Reno Airport Authority. With motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion, second.
Second.
Make a motion, second. Uh, roll call starting with Mr. Ballhorn.
Here. Yep.
Trusty Cronister? Trusty White?
Yep.
Trusty Ryder? Chairman Rogers?
Yes. Move on to D, nominations and appointments. Need nomination and appointment of two members to serve on the El Reno Airport Advisory Board. One for the remainder of a three-year term set to expire June the 20th, and one for the remainder of a three-year term set to expire, expire on June 2019.
I nominate Van Perkins finish out that term, and I nominate, uh, Justin Deal.
Got nomination on Van Perkins and Justin Deal. Any more nominations? Nominations received.
Make a motion to approve nomination of the two based on acclamation. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It's five, four to, not four to one, I'm gonna be in absent. Uh, need to make a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Got a motion, second. Roll call starting with Ballhorn.
Yep.
I'll, I'll sue all in favor.
Yep. All in favor, yeah. We're switching up on you, aren't we, Timmy?
That's it.
All right, Bob.
Your turn, Mr. Ballhorn.
Call the meeting to order of the El Reno Recreational Authority. Roll call starts with Ryder.
Here. Trusty Robinson?
Here.
Trusty White?
Yep.
Trusty Cronister? Chairman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine by the El Reno Recreational Authority and will be enacted in, with one motion. Should discussion be desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes of the December 12, 2017 regular meeting of the El Reno Recreational Authority.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Rolls, we'll start with Ryder.
Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Cronister? Chairman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Nomination and appointments. Number two, nomination and appointments for five members to serve on the El Reno Recreational Authority Advisory Board. Two, for the remainder of three-year term set to expire June 2020. Two, for the remainder of two years set to expire June 2019. One, for the remainder of a one-year term set to expire June 2018.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, you got five applications, we got five spots. I'd like to motion that we appoint Tim Pate to the, uh, the one-year term. Nominate, uh, nominate Ryan Eaton, I'm just going down the list, not Ryan Eaton, to the two-year term. Matthew Miller to the two-year term. Josh Finnegan to the three-year term, and A.J. Haglund to the three-year term.
Second.
Have a motion, then a second?
Second.
Roll call start. Ryder.
Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yep.
Trusty Cronister?
Yes.
Chairman Ballhorn?
Yes. Reports?
No reports, see me?
No reports. Move on to adjournment?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's now 5:35, and I call the El Reno Hospital Authority Regular Meeting Tuesday, January the 9th to order. Roll call start with Cronister.
Here.
Trusty Ballhorn?
Here.
Trusty Robinson?
Here.
Trusty Ryder? Chairman White?
Here. If you get all of us sick, we're gonna cut your tires, Cronister, just let you know. And number two, approval of, uh, minutes of the December 12, 2017 regular meeting of the El Reno Hospital Authority.
Motion approved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, roll call vote start with Ryder.
Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Trusty Ballhorn?
Here.
Vice Chairman Cronister?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
So move.
Make a motion, second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. It's now 5:36, and I call the Municipal Authority Regular Meeting Tuesday, January 9, 2018 to order. Roll call start with Trusty Ryder.
Here. Trusty Robinson?
Here.
Trusty Ballhorn?
Here.
Vice Chairman Cronister?
Here.
Chairman White?
Yes. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items be considered routine by the Municipal Authority. We will act with, with one motion. Should discussion be desired on that item, we will remove that item from the consent agenda, considered separately. Number one, number one, approval of the minutes on December 12, 2017 regular meeting of the El Reno Municipal Authority. Number two, approval of minutes on the December 28, 2017 special meeting of the El Reno Municipal Authority. And number three, approval of the claims requesting trustee authorization for the period beginning December the 1st, 2017, and, uh, ending December the 31st, 2017.
Make a motion to approve one and three?
I have motion for exec, for all of it, for one and three, from Cronister.
Second.
Second by Robinson. Roll call start with Cronister.
Um, yes.
Trusty Ballhorn?
Yes.
Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Trusty Ryder?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. Move on to E, discussion items, discussion consideration possible action to approve change order with Tonto Environmental for removal of sludge?
We gotta go back to two minutes.
Oh.
And two minutes. If per one, per three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Uh, approval of minutes. Oh, that's right, we got a correction, don't we? I knew that. Lindsey, we, you prepared for that, I just went right by it, didn't I?
Correction on.
Well, no, I, I was just needing to abstain from two, cause I wasn't here.
Okay, well, we do, but there is a correction, there is a correction of minutes, is there?
No, it was the rec authority.
Okay.
And it was handed out, so we're.
Okay.
I'm gonna make motion for two.
Second.
Got a motion by Robinson, second by Ballhorn. Uh, roll call start with Ryder.
Here. Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Trusty Ballhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cronister?
I abstained.
Chairman White?
Yes. Motion carries. Now, I got what you're doing, Cronister. Discussion item, number four, discussion consideration possible action to approve a change order with Tonto Environmental for removal of sludge from the North Lagoon at the old wastewater treatment facility known as project number I-07, water reuse project, and authorize the mayor to, and the city manager to sign all documents associated there, too. Okay, basically, we got done with the, uh, removal of the sludge out of our, uh, portion of our, uh, facility at the wastewater treatment plant. The ultimate goal here is to, and you know, I've navigated this with Dan's help, and we've all kinda worked this, we've sold, uh, we're trying to sell some water to oil company. We have sold some of our well water, but we're trying to sell some of our reuse water that come out of the sewer plant. So, uh, we have some fracking operations coming on, we have some interest, uh, we have a lot of interest of selling that water, especially with this coming up with the springtime, uh, you know, and the summertime with the drought, they don't know if it's gonna come, so we, we really wanna get that project on, on go. They have removed, and they, there's some change orders that have to come back, and we're gonna buy the material for, uh, coming along, and, uh, they'll probably, we'll have to come back to you also to get the pipe connected to the, to the deal. We're gonna do that with the current contract we have with V-LIP. There'll be a pipe connect through the plant to the lagoon system. But on this change order, we're going with Tonto, and they're, they're asking about $36,000, $36,000 to basically lay the riprap back in and have.
They'll, on the, on the slope of the entire lagoon, they'll put a, a fabric, and then they'll reinstall the riprap over it. There are also, this includes constructing a concrete head wall in the dike for the pipes coming in from the sewer plant and the pipe going out to sell it.
Yeah, for the valves and everything else. So, that basically, that'll do it, and then we think that we'll be able to sell water 45, 60 days, and that's what our goal is, that's what we're gonna try to shoot for. Uh, we should be, hopefully, be able to sell our reuse water around March.
So this just wasn't in the scope of the original bid, I guess, or is that?
Yeah, this is, uh, the maximum contin, uh, change order is 15 percent, this one's 14.5, it's within the.
No, I mean, as far as the actual work, the lining, we weren't sure if we had a liner at that point.
We didn't know at that point in time, and basically, some of that has to come back through DEQ for their approval.
Yeah, DEQ, DEQ is like samples of all the swell. We don't, we don't have to replace a bottom liner. The bottom liner is what was concerning us mostly, but the, the compaction on that is a good, it's a good original liner, we're gonna be able to stay with that.
Okay.
Now, the nice thing about this project, just, we, just to remind the council, it's, wind up gonna cost us $200,000, $300,000, but all the projections are we'll recover 100 percent of the cost within about six months of water sales, and after that, it'll be net gain, so it's a pretty good project.
And also, don't forget, I've been using the budgetary monies the last couple of years. Koba, we received a lot of, uh, influx of the disposal side. You know, used to, we would get a check for $5,000, $6,000 from the porta potty companies coming out and dumping. Well, now that we're servicing these big companies that are doing the other ones, $75,000?
$67,000.
Well, 75 is what I, what I showed. So it's 65 and 75 for this month is what we got. So basically, we're getting around $67,000 for this reuse of, when they go out and they, they, they clean those systems out for those tanks, so we're, we're making a lot of money on that backside of it.
Make a motion to approve change order.
You got a motion?
Second.
You got a second, roll call vote start with Cronister.
Yes.
Trusty Ballhorn?
Yes.
Trusty Robinson?
Yes.
Trusty Ryder?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
So move. Second.
We got a motion by Robinson, second by Cronister, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. It's now 5:42, I now call the El Reno City Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, January the 9th to order. And before we start business, Paul Roach, would you please come out and lead us in the word of the Lord? Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we just wanna thank you so much for the way that you love us, the way you care for us. Father, we thank you for this council, as you lead them and guide them, and you give them wisdom, Father, and the things that they do. Father, we thank you for the city that we live in, and, Father, we just speak and we pray, all the covenant rights, Father, that we have, and the blessings upon this city, and the decisions that we make, Father, and that they're correct decisions, Father, and they're good decisions, they will help our community and the people that live in it. Father, you keep us all safe, and we plead the blood of Jesus for all these lives, and, Father, we wanna thank you for the sacrifice you made us in your son, Jesus, and we thank you so much, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Join me to flag the creeds. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Paul, don't run away. Tell me what's going on with that church of yours.
Well, you have the good shirt on there, I see.
You like that, don't you, Paul?
Yeah.
There's some people up here that do not, and I, and Gary, I, I'll forgive him for that.
But that's one nice thing, when you talk to the Lord, he doesn't care which color you've got on.
I don't know about that, but anyway. Tell me what's going on, Paul.
I like to tell people I turned OSU down.
I understand. Paul, we just came off.
We're doing great, we're doing great. Blessing baskets went great.
Just gonna say, we come off blessing basket.
And, uh, I don't have the exact numbers yet, we haven't had a meeting, but it was around 1,600 families somewhere.
Wow.
And, uh, had plenty of volunteer, lots of volunteers this year, and we just appreciate so much what El Reno does for our community.
Paul, it's kinda neat to go out there and see, old Paul's crack and whip those boys are putting together red, red wagons and everything else. You know, Paul, we appreciate you and all the things you all do, and blessed baskets along with, um, of course, mobile meals, along with, uh, a lot of our Lord's Harvest that we're involved with, but we have so many good, uh, Ministry Alliance, there's not a community, I don't think, that bands together in some of the tragedies that we just had, and, and more so than El Reno, of course, I, I've said that with prejudice because I've seen what, what all of our community, whether it be our, our religious leaders or just our people helping cooking, uh, Indian tacos to raise, raise money for some, some kids that lost their life in a tragic fire, and, and how lucky we are to have, um, our neighbors and our friends and the compassion that we have in our community. I appreciate you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Uh, roll call, council one, Ryder.
Here. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, I'm here.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Here.
Mayor White?
Yes. We'll go on to new deletions, continuation, uh, agenda at the time, are there any? Okay, we'll go on to the, uh, consent agenda. Following items be considered routine by the El Reno City Council, may act in one motion, should discussion of that item be desired, that item be removed, consent agenda considered separately. Number one, city manager regulations, we approve. Number one, approval of the, uh, minutes of December 12, 2017 regular meeting of the El Reno City Council. Number two, approval of claims required, council authorization for the period beginning at December the 30, I'm sorry, December the 1st, 2017, and ending December 31st, 2017.
Make a motion, we approve?
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
I got a second by Ryder. Uh, roll call start with Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. Move on to audience participation. Anyone having an item to discuss business, the city council does not appear on agenda, please come to the podium at this time and state your name. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to the city of El Reno business. Anyone? Viewer? We'll move on, uh, to discussion items, to conduct a public hearing. Before I get into that, I'm gonna kinda read a little prepared speech I have here, and we're gonna kinda work some of this out. Before I open the public hearing on the next item, I understand that new information about the proposed zoning change has developed since the planning commission heard the request. I believe it would be in everybody's best interest if the planning commission and public could consider this new information before we can center a final action. And before I talk about this, I wanna go, go in this a little bit, and I talked briefly with Mark, cause I, I've had some concerns with some people from the planning commission that called me, and, um, the bottom line is, and I met with Gary, and if you don't know Gary, Gary's done a lot for the community of Mustang, we appreciate everything you've done, and we're glad to have you come into our community and work with some of the projects that Mark's worked with that's helped develop, uh, all the new housing that we've got going. So we appreciate y'all's investment in our community. And I think a lot of the, the neighbors were, uh, they either didn't get the information or there was kinda confusion, and I think the problem was, we tried to get some of this done because we were on some timelines that, that Gary and I discussed, and we wanna help complete those timelines, Gary, to do that. But, but also, I think some things have come through in, in doing this with the access, I think the main thing, and we talked about this when we first talked about this, access on Elm Street was a concern with mine before we even met with them, cause I told you that was gonna be a concern with them. And the other one was the buffer zone between the houses, and we discussed that a little bit. And, and that was the main discussion, I think, at the planning commission, and there was some confusion, um, uh, on the preparation side of it and just kinda discussion. I think a lot of that's been cleared up with some people, is that right? You all met with some people and discussed and everything else. I think the main thing is, you wanna pull some of that acreage out of that area, I'm not gonna ask you for, cause I'm just gonna kinda summarize this so we kinda go through. But I think the main thing is, the neighbors need to know exactly what that, what that issue is, and where, where the meets and bounds of that are, exactly what the plan is. And, and, and we need to know, just like the neighbors need to know, what the access route, cause Elm Street, and Gary agrees, it's not a travel route for trucks. You ain't gonna be able to get a truck underneath that bridge, we, believe me. Kent McGauley can tell you, so Ken Brown, we've done a lot of traffic reports out there trying to get people out. We all just need to make sure we've done this properly. They meet, the planning commission meets in two weeks, they meet the 23rd, the January the 23rd. And we can speed that up, we can get that on the agenda, and I think we can get the proper information to them at that point in time, maybe Gary, even some information of maybe the city purchasing some of that land, maybe, you know, with the cemetery along that area that we talked about, maybe that might be an option, that kinda help ease some of that pain of what the buffer zone needs, so we can maybe be involved in that a little bit. That'll give us a couple of weeks to sew up these, these last minute deals, because I'm gonna tell you, the back part of this land is surrounded by I, exactly what Mr. Owens is asking for, and it needs to be that. I mean, there's no other zoning for that, because it's not fair for Mr. Owens to be able to, to force to put houses in around the backside of, 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 uh, some of the trailer issue of the park, you know, of what could be, or to the other side of what could be asked to be rezoned also, currently a farm. So, we need to discuss those, and the planning commission needs to get into that and ask those questions along with the neighbors. So we wanna give them the opportunity to do that. And there has to be a buffer zone between Jamie and, and even, I think, Tammy, you purchased that property, uh, it's not been filed yet, but I think you got, but, but whatever it is, we need to make sure that's all, the buffer zones are correctly on that, on that end of it. So, it'll give us enough time to work through that issues, because really, that land absolutely on that one side needs to be, to fit into that zoning, and I know there's some areas that you built those facilities that look good, that fit right in with the, uh, what's gonna be around there. So, what I'm asking, if we can take this back to the planning commission, let them revise that, that just gives us two weeks, it still tries to speed the process up, we didn't get it done by the first year like we thought we were going to, but we, it'll help us, we don't wanna get too hastily and do this wrong. Nobody does. You all and us also, and the neighbors don't, don't want to either. So if we can do that, then I suggest, and I think the council's been very good about wanting business in town, about making the neighbors happy, we can have a special meeting the 25th, which is right after the, uh, the, the planning commission, day, day after, day in between. That way, we can get all the Is dotted and the Ts crossed to make sure it's properly done. Does that make sense? And I think that'll give more time. Neighbors, do you all understand that? Tammy? Tommy? Does that sound, I mean, I think the, the bottom line is, from what I'm hearing, you guys are just, I mean, from what I'm hearing, uh, the buffer zone and access on Elm is really what we're concerned with, is that correct? Am I, am I, anything else I'm missing? And I think he's addressed some of those, but I wanna make sure we get them down correctly on paper so everybody's protected. Does that sound fair? I mean, and I think we send it back to the planning commission, we'll do that. Okay, Gary, do you understand what we're trying to do?
Yeah, the only problem for us, man, is my parents gonna be there.
And I agree that that already is an issue.
Well, and I understand, and I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll even help you if we can prep me, I'll even, I'm not saying I'll present your side of it, I, I think the bottom line is this, I don't think no one, I don't think anybody's against this at all. I think that, that, that they're, they're wanting to know exactly how it's gonna flow, and it's more our job presenting of how it's gonna work, and maybe we can do that with some information before the meeting even comes out, and some question answered before you guys are even here. And, and the city council can still hear if it doesn't, you know, but, but I think it needs to go back to planning commission. The reason why is because the two main questions are the access and the buffer zone, and I think you can do those on a piece of paper, you know, with access agreements to whoever they are, and with the application revisit, I can't say it. Revised, revised the, the application, just taking the 77 acres and taking the 13 acres out of the 77 acres, you can do that. Does that make sense? So, so I think that, that the bottom line is, I don't think the neighbors are asking anything irresponsible, except they gotta have those answers, and I, I really don't blame them.
Man.
Yeah, well, hang on just a second. Is, do you, do you see what I'm saying, Gary?
Yes.
Yeah, cause I, I don't think we'll have a problem at that point in time, cause I think the planning commissions was just, the planning commission, from what I read the minutes and what I understood from some of the members, it was just a little disorganized and not, where we're gonna do this, we might do that. I think the bottom line is, now you've kinda got most of it hammered down, from what I understand, cause I've talked to a couple of neighbors, and they were satisfied. But I think the main thing is, is that the other people in the planning commission need to see the plan on paper.
We got all.
I, I know, but they need to see it, is what I'm trying, they, they gotta see it. Because here's the other thing is, the, the mistake that, that I probably made in doing this, and I say that, I, you know, we, we, the council, I, I, we always support the, 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 uh, the planning commission. And we vote against them every once in a while when we think there's an issue, cause there's a little less, but we rarely do that, and it's because there's other issues brought up, and there's been some answers made. I, I don't wanna undermine those people that spend their time up here, and those neighbors have called those people, I wanna make sure that both people and both parties, just like you do, Gary, I know you real well, and, and I know you wanna do, you're gonna do the right thing. And you told me that you'd take that out immediately when I said they'd have a problem, and you said we would do that. But the application was already filed, we thought we, you know, we, we didn't know how to do it. So I think we need to take a little time to do that and make that happen. I just think we have to do that. And, and if we can't make the meeting, and we don't think it's gonna fly, then we have to wait another more time. But I think the council itself is willing to have a special meeting, uh, to do that, and it just coincides with their meeting, they'll put them, the very first item, agenda item, right, Matt? You put it on, and then we get it, get it, get it going the very first time.
When would the next, when would the next planning commission be, after the 23rd?
It would be, the next planning commission, Dustin?
Uh, 4th Tuesday in February.
So. So.
The 4th?
It's gonna be a special meeting.
We gotta get it done, I know you want to get it done, 'cause they got other projects going, and I understand all that. And I think they do too. I think the bottom line is, I think you understood their side, they understood, we gotta get it on paper so they understand it and the planning commission can understand it to make the right, uh, ruling to justification to pass on to us. Then that way, there's no, there's no if, ands, buts, 'cause I think the bottom line is, we're all trying to get it done and, and to nobody's, uh, fault, the holidays gotten away with all this timelines. That's just the way it works. So, is that okay with you all? Let's try that. Okay. Nancy, you had something to say.
Yes, I'm Nancy Wise, and I am on the municipal planning commission. The, um, the point that we tried to make at our last meeting was that if you want to have two different zonings on a piece of property, the application needs to be made that way. That was the only reason that it wasn't approved was because of the concern about the 14 neighbors that was in the front of the property. Um, as far as the access, the entrance, if, if something has to be worked out, it's gonna be worked out after you, after that property, the back part of that property is approved, is approved for industrial, for I-1. So, if you're gonna make the application being driven, present it to us again, you need to present it to us in two forms, in as, as, as a residential property of the first 14 acres and the I-1 on the remaining property.
Well, no, 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 hang on. No, that's not correct. That's not right. That's not what you do. Here's what you present, you're taking, that's not correct, you're taking the 13 acres out of the application of the zoning. So, the 13 acres stays and remains A-1, agriculture 1, until you come back up and ask for a zoning change. Because if you do that, then you're changing the whole notification of what you've done, and we're not doing that. What we're doing is, is we're revising the application based on the, the problems of the neighbor, or the problems the neighborhood had with the zoning, and we're revising that and we're dropping 13 acres, which you're gonna show me, 13 point, whatever else acres, you're gonna show the planning commission, out of the application process, the front acres. That will remain A-1 that is currently zoned now. Then the other property is what you're gonna go back for and ask for the revision for. We're not, you, you're not saying houses or anything else. It's still your right to come back and zone that I-16, and I say that, and we're, it's our right to deny it. But, but the bottom line is, we can't do that, 'cause then we have to go back to notification, and that's not what we're trying to do here. We're trying to get this thing done so you can get your stuff and it doesn't change what the neighbors asked for. Now, if they decide to, if they decide to go ahead and, if they decide to do something else, then that's fine. But what we're doing is, you're taking that application out and you're remaining that 13 acres or whatever, you bring the paper back up to me, and that's gonna stay the A-1.
Okay, that's fine. We were just under the impression that, right, that it was also.
But we can't do that. So, but, but that, that, so.
We were just gonna omit that 13.
That's right. And if you, if you omit that, then it stays the way the property owners want to keep it right now at this point in time, and if you want to come back and do something else, then they have another opportunity to come back at that point in time to say, hey, we don't want apartments here, we want, you know, whatever. I mean, I don't need, what, you know, multifamily, whatever zoning at that point in time, does that make sense? But it accomplishes exactly what we want to accomplish, a buffer zone between those houses. That make sense? Everybody square with that, Richard? Do you see what I'm doing? That way it just kinda covers everybody. Nancy, you with me now?
Yes, fine.
Okay. So, any other, any other comments or speeches that I can correct anybody on? Mark?
Are you gonna call a special meeting on the city council?
We are. We'll call that the Thursday, and we'll call that, uh, you know, Lindsey will set that, uh, uh, you don't have to set it 48 hours, so you'll set it Thursday, I mean, or Tuesday, you know, before. But yeah, we, we plan on, what I told everybody else, I'd like to set it January 25th at 5:30. Then that way everybody can get time to get off work and then, then come up here and that'd be the only item on the agenda, we'll discuss it and go from there. Does that make sense?
Sounds good, we appreciate it.
I think the main thing is, we need to go through the planning commission to get their discussion. Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's the best way we can do it. Tammy? Okay. All right. Boy, that's true leadership right there almost, didn't it?
You done a great job.
All right. I would like to recommend, uh, to make a motion to refer this back to the planning commission for consideration at their January 23rd meeting and continue the public hearing, continue this public hearing, uh, on the special council meeting on January 25th. Bob?
Second.
I'm making a motion. Who's, who's talking? Uh, uh, hearing on this item, special council meeting on January 25th at 5:30, council meeting to consider the planning commission's recommendations and the public comments. Does that sound fair enough? I made a great motion, I need a wonderful second.
Second.
I got a wonderful second, Bob. Roll call start with Tracy.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Robinson?
Uh, yeah.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yeah. Okay. Gary, thank you. I appreciate you all, thank the neighbors, thank you.
Thanks.
Richard, thank you all, James. I think that'll be, if there's any concerns, call me or call anybody up here. Tammy, same way. Nancy, I've talked to you enough in two days. I said, you don't have, I told them that they can call me, I said, I'm afraid you're gonna, you might call me too. All right, we're gonna move on to item four. To conduct a public hearing, consideration submitted by Loretta Pavy, amended, uh, zonings, uh, classification approximately 1.1 acres located east and south of Country Club Road, north of the Country Club Apartments, part of Northwest Quarter, Section 17, Township 12, North Range 7, West Indian Meridian, Country Club Road, from rural A-1 to restrictive commercial CR. Okay, basically, this is the first one you, up here on your, on your deal, uh, oh yeah, I need to make, now open the public hearing. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Pavy, Steve Fox isn't here to present it? He is here to present it?
Oh, he's not here now.
Okay.
But Larry is.
Okay. Uh, it's a simple deal, I mean, the, the bottom line is the C, the CR is what you see marked in the red, uh, Ms. Pavy, uh, is asking to rezone that. Later on in our items, you'll see there's gonna be a road that'll be, uh, to the, uh, above that, that follows the curvature of that property line. Matter of fact, Ms. Pavy, that road really was gonna not cut that out at one point in time, 'til, 'til we talked, I mean.
We were done at 13:00.
Well, I was gonna say, you were gonna lose some, you were gonna lose some frontage there and you needed to keep that, and that'll be a great pad site and then also other sites off that roadside, so, um, to, to, to do that. So, she's asking the very first corner to be zoned CR. Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, I consider this public hearing closed. We're going to be, 'cause it's got, uh, discussion, consideration, possible action, ordinance 9133, ordinance amending zoning clarification for approximately 1.1 acres located east of South Country Club Road, just north of Country Club Road Apartments, port, uh, northwest quarter, fourth section, 17 Township 12, North Range 7, West Indian Meridian, Canadian County, from agriculture A-1 to restricted commercial CR. And I need to declare an emergency, I got a motion to approve?
Second.
I got a second. Roll call votes start with Ryder.
Yes. Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. I got a motion for a priority emergency, I second, roll call votes start with Pavy, or, uh, Cronister, please tell us.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, motion carries. Number five, to conduct a public hearing considering requests submitted by Loretta Pavy, amending zoning classification approximately 3.5 acres located east of the, uh, Country Club Road, just north of Country Club Apartments, part of Northwest Quarter, fourth section 17, Township 12, North Range 7, West Indian Meridian, Canadian County, from rural agriculture A-1 to combined residential R-2. Basically, what you see here is, uh, uh, the, uh, yellow line, I'm not really sure why you're doing the R-2, but that's, that's your, that's your, that's your problem.
Are you opening?
Uh, yeah. I make the opening, we open the public hearing, but she's requesting R-2, which would be a, a very light way to go right there, so. Any other questions? Anybody else want to speak against or for? I kinda see that with the audience, but okay. Okay, I make a motion, or I, I consider this public hearing closed. We'll go on to B, 'cause, uh, discussion, consideration, possible action of ordinance 9133, uh, located east of Country Club Road, north, uh, the Country Club Apartments, Township 4 North, Section 17, Township 12, North Range 7, West Indian Meridian, Country Club, from rural A-1 to combined R-2, and declare an emergency. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion, second, roll call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Second. Roll call start with Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. We'll go on to six. Discussion consideration of possible requests submitted by Loretta Pavy to accept preliminary plat of Canadian Heights Editions, Section 1, uh, located east of the South Canadian County Country Club Road, north of Canadian County Apartments, a part of Northwest Quarter, fourth section 17, Township 12, North Range 7, West Indian Meridian, in Canadian County, Oklahoma. I now consider this public hearing open. Oh, huh? Okay. Oh, no, I'm not in public hearing, I'm getting confused, I have to make public hearings. All right, discussion. All right, um, the only discussion I have, and you or Larry can answer this for me, Nancy, you might, but JT, this is a street that's coming in, and that's great that's a street coming in, but, and, and I'm a little bi, I, I, we have, I'm part of, grew up on some land, so, so there, and we got curb cuts that are approved, but for a street that's a collector's street with all those lots that we just approved going to another development back behind there. The only question I have, and we discussed this in the past, I know that they briefly discussed it at the, uh, planning commission, but Country Club Road's a busy road, and I can understand you having curb cuts, well, certain ones that are approved and not approved, but to have a collector's street that comes out, to, to have a deceleration lane or emerging lane, I, 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 I think that's a big mistake. Now, I might be wrong, but, but really, that needs to have a deceleration lane and an emerging lane, and I think that was kinda talked about at the planning commission, and no offense, it was talked about at the planning commission at, um, at Center's Crossing, and I thought we addressed that and we didn't, and it should've been addressed there. And, and you need to have a deceleration and acceleration lane that goes off that property. Now, it cuts some, some area, but now to the, to the other, it cuts some area off that's in basically where the drainage area is and whatever else. So, it doesn't really matter to a certain extent, but you need to have a deceleration and a, and a, and emerging lane in the collector's street off of Country Club. Does that make sense? Does everybody understand what I mean? Tracy, you understand what I mean by deceleration lane? It's kinda like a third lane where you slide, you know I'm talking about, Ms. Pavy?
Yeah.
So, I think you need to, that was, Nancy, was that discussed?
It was.
And, I mean, it, it's, it's always been the concern on Country Club, am I wrong or? Carrie, you're on, is that correct?
It had a huge difference.
Okay. So, I guess my point to you is, Ms. Pavy, I think this is a great development and I think you're on the right track, and we've helped you, believe me, dealing with that guy back behind those apartments has been pretty painful for us at the city. Uh, it's been most unorganized, it's been a little bit, I, I wanna say this, it's been the most unorganized thing we've ever had to do up here by dealing with that guy. And, and, and I know I speak for the staff and myself, we've done it because of you, because I'm telling you, that guy will wear you out and it hasn't been, but anyway, I'm gonna get off that. I don't mind approving this, I think the council should approve it, I'll probably sustain, but we need to have a deceleration and acceleration lane on a collector's street. Does that make sense? JT?
Yeah.
So, if someone wants, I mean, if there ain't a discussion, I think you need to do that. What do you want to do, JT?
I'm not sure what the specifications are, I mean, what, how long, how wide, how long?
I'm not either. Um, but I don't want to hold Ms. Pavy up either. Uh, we gotta, you, well, you need to prove this, 'cause you can't, can you not, can you close on the land till you approve this, or can you not close on, or have you already closed, you've already closed on the land?
So, if it's been discussed, is there a reason, what was the determination from the discussions that you've had several times on this?
Well, Steve Fox redrew this road according to what Matt was wanting 14 times.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 no. Yeah, let, let me explain to you what I did. Whoever was helping, Ms. Pavy had the road that abutted dominoes that cut out her frontage. I was trying to get more money for Ms. Pavy, 'cause she can get more money for that frontage, and she can now sell these lots, which she's zoned I-2, which is housing, I'm sorry, R-2, beside a housing, beside a, a, um, apartment complex, which I wouldn't, I didn't tell you to do that, I don't know who told you to do that. That should be, well, but it should be commercial, that, that, you got a collector's street there now. You, you could have some offset businesses of strip mall or whatever else in there, you can, that's a perfect spot for that. Especially abutting, uh, uh, apartment complex, they're not gonna want too many houses about the apartment complex, but that's, you can always come back and change that, but that's what I suggested, but what I'm trying to tell you is, I didn't, I just suggested getting more frontage and moving that road over to hug that creek, which you did, which minimizes the land that you're gonna lose. You're gonna gain more money commercially, I'm not your real estate agent, but I'm trying to help you, you're gonna gain more money real, doing commercial than you are residential. So, and that's what we need more of right now at this point, because you got several developments going. But the only thing that we did not discuss with Steve, and I didn't see this till the other day, is a deceleration lane, and it was discussed, and it's been discussed in everything on the Country Club, that doesn't currently already have approved or approval of curb cuts, because it's a collector's street. You're gonna have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 10 lots comparably, plus a whole housing development there, that's gonna have a lot more than a dollar store.
Well, I know you're not.
No, no, I know you're not, I'm just, no, you asked, but you put me on the spot, why did I do it? I didn't, I, I, I didn't do that. So, I, I designed the road to get you more money and you're doing the right thing there, but the street needs to be, the street needs to have a D-cell and an E-cell, emerge.
I just wanna know one thing, why do I have to follow the rules that nobody else has?
Uh, we'd like to know, we'd like to know.
Because I will.
Well, and, and here's the bottom line is, we'd like to know who they are and let us know who listed, did I? Well, once again, that, they dropped the ball, that we didn't, look, that was discussed and we were, we were upset with that. I mean, that was a, that wasn't, absolutely, that was not, uh, that was supposed to be in there, to be honest with you. And until it was done, it, it was not, they dropped the ball. We, the city dropped the ball on that. I'm not gonna say I did, because I'm the one that caught, I was dropping the ball, but, but, but we did drop the ball. So, anybody else you wanna name, Ms. Pavy? I'm taking names. But, but the bottom line is, that's what we think. So, we can, we can ask her to, we can approve this, I, I, I.
With the stipulation?
With the stipulation of a, a, Steve Fox, who's our engineer, which is our city engineer, approval of, of new, or do you want to table it?
Matt.
Hang on just a minute, ask JT, 'cause he's.
I actually approve it with Steve, I guess, that's no issue.
And just minimum specification.
Yeah, we're not asking.
Preliminary.
It's a preliminary plat anyway, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be fine, but we wanna go ahead and approve it, so you go ahead and have the power, if someone wants to do something, you have the power to close on it. Go ahead.
Who pays for this?
You would.
Why?
Because you're developing that land. Believe me, I'm, I'm digging a pond out right now, it's costing us a lot more money than what we thought it was gonna cost, but, 'cause they make you, do their specifications, that's just how it works. Being developer, that's just what you're gonna have to do. You're, and I say you're gonna do it, whoever, who's paying for the road there?
Well, we're splitting it.
And, and I think you go back to the table with him. I would.
So, Matt, let me ask you a question, you mentioned sort of in that discussion, uh, that this wouldn't happen if it was existing curb cuts. What does existing curb cuts have to do with putting the acceleration lanes into something that is not even restricted yet?
What I'm saying by existing curb cuts is, is that existing curb cuts are based on property. This is a collector road, this isn't a curb cut. A curb cut would be only to the minimum standards of the, uh, standards of the width of a curb cut, is that correct, Matt?
Right.
Okay, and they would not fall into the same standards as a road or collector road that Mr. Fox designed. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's, that's why I'm saying that, because you can't confuse the two with the one. This is a collector's street with several lots where it couldn't be, if it's like four acres, there's two curb cuts, there can only be those two curb cuts that are allowed by whatever the city did, based on that decision, based on entrance and exit, just like wa, you know, uh, um, McDonald's or whatever else. Now, you could maybe make them do a, an offside street as far as a, um, access road, you know, beside there, but that would be on the developer's side or whatever else, but they currently have it, it wouldn't be a collector's street. Be different specifications.
How, how long?
That'd be something that Steve could draw up and tell you and, and give you the prices on what it's gonna cost or whatever else. But, but ultimately, what I'm trying to tell you, Ms. Pavy, this'll, this'll help you ultimately with the development and attraction of the other land, because you don't wanna make another hindrance to where people, especially if you're gonna have older people live behind there, they're gonna.
Or they can't get in.
They can't get in and get out, it's not, it's not gonna work for you. Does that make sense?
So, do you just want a deceleration lane?
Any.
You want anything going out?
No, I, I said deceleration and acceleration.
And acceleration.
It'll be a, it'll take, it'll take the whole lip right there on both sides.
And with, with the speed limit in that area, they should be very short.
They should be short, because we extended that to 25 miles per hour.
It'll be the, yeah, length of three or four cars, probably.
So, that'd really work well.
Well, not if you, not if you, not if you're the one getting a ticket.
No, it's worked well.
35 miles.
We'll make sure that we get that fat, we'll make sure we get that Explorer, Silver We'll make sure that we get that fat, we'll make sure we get that Explorer, Silver Explorer with the First Baptist Church sticker on it. We'll make sure that you welcome that, Mr. Hodges. All right. But do you see, I mean, we're not trying to punish you by any means. I'm just telling you, if we don't, if you don't do this, it ain't, it ain't right for the city, it's not right for you, it's not right for your land. Well. Specifications based on what the engineer, what he does is, he does a formula based on, like Mr. Galloway said, he does a formula based on the traffic count out there and the speed. And then what he'll do is he'll justify that with a calculation that's in his college to make it work. Does that make sense? So, what would you prefer us to do, Ms. Pavy? Would you prefer us to, you want us to table it?
I'd like you to go ahead and, and then Steve can draw these.
Okay. On a stipulation that's brought up to our standards of what we accept and everything else.
As soon as they get the standards.
Yeah.
We don't have any standards.
But, but that's what I'm trying to tell you. That's up to you because, now, now, he's asking you a libel question. That's what I'm asking you. He's asking you a good question. Now, don't forget, we're, we're kind of given an open checkbook to, but, but, I mean, we can do whatever you want to do.
No, I've got the open checkbook.
Well, if we make that motion, you really do. And I'm okay with that. But, but I, I'm asking you what you want us to do.
Well, like I said, I'd like you to go ahead and pass it, and I'd just say, will you speak to the office?
Okay. You'll, you'll take care of all the costs. Yeah. I think you ought to go back to the board with them. And you can say that we made that based on our standards, that you can recoup some more money based on that.
I think you, I think your motion could be to approve with the stipulation that acceleration and deceleration to the minimum standards approved by the city engineer.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I, I make a motion, that's exactly what the motion is going to be. I make a motion that we approve to standards. And I wish you'd buttoned in my motions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Good job there.
I make a motion we approve the, the plat that Ms. Pavy wants to get done and get going on the approval of Steve Fox's standards that he believes that are necessary for that piece of property and, and that design of that road to approve the plat.
So, I want to specifically mention the deceleration.
And I want to, and I want to specifically mention that I'm going to require him to include a deceleration and an acceleration lane.
My second.
Got a second by Robinson, and I got, we got a motion by Robinson, a second, oh, I made a motion Robinson, second. Roll call votes start with Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Yes.
Yes. Now, Ms. Pavy, you're square. I hope so. Baby. But, but I will tell you, your comment.
I'm going to picture yours.
But, but, but your comment about you're the only one, trust me, you're not. So, don't feel bad. Okay. We'll move on. Seven. Discussion duration possible action requests submitted by the El Reno Country Club Group, LLC to accept preliminary plat of the Greens on Country Club located west of South Country Club Road, just south of Fairway Breeze Apartments, part of the, oh, I got a vote on, we got, we voted on it, didn't we, Ms. Pavy?
It is.
Okay, uh, uh, south of Fairway Breeze Apartments. Had to be in public hearings. Part of southwest corner, fourth, section seven, township twelve, north range seven, west Indian Marina, Canadian County, Oklahoma. I'm a party of this, so I'm going to step back. Dustin, you might explain this if you want. Come on up to the podium, Dustin.
I guess I will. On the, on the screen, I think we've all seen what the plan for the Country Club PUD was. That's come through for Planning Commission and City Council already. The one notable, or the two notable things to, to see on this preliminary plat that are going to be amended, one is that the title of it will say, "The Greens on Country Club" rather than "Country Club Edition." That was something that came, I guess, a couple of days before Planning Commission. And the other thing, based on staff recommendation, is that a full loop will be shown for that public street which is proposed. On the south end of that public street there, you see block one, lot two. There is a piece that is east to west that says it is a proposed cross-access or something like that. The final, when everything comes through, that will be shown as a permanent easement that is a, that is part of the road that will be dedicated to the city.
Hard greens, I say Matt White Bullard there?
Should. No, believe me, that, my partners will not let that happen. I have a motion, I have a second. Roll call, start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilman Robinson. Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Epstein. We'll move on to discussion consideration possible action, approve change order with Tonto Environmental, approval, removal of sledge of the project number I-07 water reuse. Well, good night. Don't say a word, Galloway. Number eight, discussion consideration possible action to approve project maintenance easement by, in between the City of El Reno and Oklahoma Department of Transportation on Federal A, project number NHPP-209-N051, in the hole, SS job number, piece number two zero, I'm sorry, 2700404 in the hole, installation of highway lighting along I-40 Business Loop, eighty-one over Union Pacific Railroad on the south edge of El Reno and Canadian County. Basically, we are redoing, the state of Oklahoma, we've been working on this project. Jeff, you and I started on it. That's why I was telling Dan, we started on it because of the sewer line and everything else. We started on it several years ago. And Dan, Dan lied in over there several months ago about the lighting. We got some Victoria style lighting. We're going to paint the bridge El Reno blue. It's going to be really cool. We're going to have some sixty-six features involved in it. It's going to be really neat. It's going to be a beautiful bridge. The state of Oklahoma is going to pay for it, and we don't have to. But the good part about it is, Tracy, we've got to maintain the lights. Dustin, you and Nancy, be quiet for a minute.
This, uh, this, this agreement is required on every state highway project inside a city in the state of Oklahoma. What, basically, in essence, what the state says, they'll maintain everything between the curbs. We have to maintain everything outside the curb, which in this case is the rail and the lights.
Okay.
Make a motion with proof.
You got a motion, a second?
Second.
Roll call votes start with Cronister.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yep.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. Number nine, discussion consideration possible action to approve change order with Tonto Environmental for removal of sledge in North Lagoon at the old west wastewater facility, project number I-07, the water reuse project. And authorize me and Dan to sign all documents.
Make a motion with proof.
As in authority?
As in authority.
I got a motion by Robinson, second by Ballhorn. Roll call, start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. All right, discussion consideration possible action to approve ordinance number ninety-one thirty-four, ordinance demanding chapter two ninety-eight relating to prohibition, areas of smoking, repealing ordinances, and conflict providing for severability, declaring emergency. Basically, I'm going to tell you, Carrie, you've done a great job with Matt. I really appreciate all the work you and Cedric and your team does. This is, and we're going to continue this on with some other things as time goes on. Carrie's working with us about trying to get our communities healthy and better in line. And basically, this ordinance is, is, this doesn't allow smoking around playground equipment in some of the pavilions. So, it's a good first step. It lets, allows a twenty-five feet barrier to do that and kind of gives some area to allow that. It does not include the golf course stuff, JT, that we hadn't discussed before. We are working through some of that issues, and Carrie's been real helpful with that. So, we're going to start with the playgrounds and the pavilions at this time.
Good.
Does that make sense?
Hmm, it's good.
Yeah, I have a motion for approval. Tracy?
I'm making a motion.
Tracy makes a motion, Ryder makes a motion, and Robinson seconds. And then don't forget, we've got to do a motion.
Vice Mayor Cronister. Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. All right, go ahead, Timmy.
Declarate murder second.
Tracy?
Yes.
Second it?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. Roll call votes start with Cronister.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. All right, number eleven, nomination appointment of one council member as a primary and one alternate to the AGC Board of Directors and one member of the primary and one alternate to the AGC nine-one-one Board of Directors. And one council member of the primary to alternate to Garber Wellington Board of Directors. We've tried this, JT, and you never can't make it, you and I. I'll tell you what I'd like to do is, I'd like to nominate me as a primary for AGC, all the ACOG boards and the Garber Wellington. And I'd like to nominate Lindsay Grigg as the alternate and try to see if she wants to do that, if she wants to get into it, I'd like to send her. Does that make sense? I got a motion and a second, because it's with worded council person, Lindsay. So, we'll do it that way, then you, you can go. Okay. I got a motion, a second. They do. No, they, they, listen, you can, they can have a, I've had the.
Managers on.
Yeah, I've had, yeah, I've had, Tony and I were on there at one time, and we didn't go either. All right, I got a motion. I make the motion? All right, I made the motion, you second it. All right, roll call vote, Ryder then.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister. Mayor White.
Yes. Okay, JT, I got the perfect resolution for this. Nomination appointment of one primary and one alternate to serve on the Community Action Board of Directors for a one-year term set to November of twenty eighteen. Tracy, you need to serve on this board. I've served on there, I just don't have time because they changed it to our account to different nights and another meeting I have. But I'm going to tell you, Community Action does so much good for this community. We need to have representation. I mean, JT, we try to get other people to be on there. And Nikki with the Lord's Harvest is on there. It, you know what, Community Act, it's a great group. You'd be perfect for this. Would you mind serving on this with us?
I'd love to.
Okay. And then we'll make, uh, we'll make JT the secretary. How's that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion and then second by TM. Roll call votes start with JT.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes. You'll like that board, Tracy.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yeah, oh, yeah. All right. Nomination of two members to serve the El Reno Board of Adjustments for the remainder. The two, three-year terms are set to expire two thousand and twenty. We had two people apply, Brad Baker and Paul King. I nominate them, set to apply, term to expire. The three-year term. I got a motion and a second. Roll call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. All right, Board of Appeals, we have two applications, a nomination appointment of two members to serve the El Reno Board of Appeals Adjustments for remainder three-year term set to expire two thousand and twenty. I nominate Tim Davidson and Paul King.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. Number fifteen, nomination appointment of two members to serve the El Reno Park Recreation Board for the member of the three-year term set to expire two thousand and twenty. I have two applications, Holly Eden and Jimmy Johnston.
Yes.
Make a motion by Ryder, second by Robinson. Roll call, start with Cronister.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Council, Councilman Robinson. Councilwoman Ryder.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Now, I'm on, where am I on now? Planning Commission. Nomination appointment of two members to serve the El Reno Planning Commission for the remainder of a three-year term set to expire two thousand and twenty. Carrie, she applied, but we, I understand. I nominate Vicki Proctor and Tom Lloyd.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Roll call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Thank you, Carrie.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister. Mayor White.
Yes. All right. Presentation of financial reports. Marcia? We did good this month. Oh, boy. Dave, you have a hard stack.
Yeah.
Sales tax, I sent to you, Ray, pretty good. Sales tax is up. All right, we'll move on to reports. JT, you got anything besides coughing and hacking and sick everywhere?
Nope.
Okay, Bob?
No, sir.
Mr. Robinson? Tracy?
Well, of course I do.
I'm sure you do. Go ahead.
Okay, um, Dan, is there, do you have an update on something that Matt brought up a few meetings ago about this, the fountain?
Yeah, I had a little summary sheet to pass out to you, and I didn't bring it. But I can tell you very quickly, we, back in '07, the city applied for two grants, one for forty-seven thousand in project for banners and another for a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for the Youngheim Plaza Fountain. That didn't get funded for a couple of years. It was approved by ODOT, and then we got the money. Over the years, there was some issues with the, the first proposals were above the financial limits, and we redesigned and redesigned. But, good news is, the original plan was for a hundred and thirty-six banners. We wound up with two hundred. Not two hundred will be up, but at least a hundred and thirty-six is up, a hundred long Route sixty-six, thirty-six downtown, and there's samples up there. The other ones are additional ones that we were able to include in the cost. So, when there's storm damaged one, we've got replacements, and so they last this long time.
And we, we put some up, Dan, but the problem is the brackets weren't right.
We had some, the brackets weren't right. They didn't work on wooden poles.
The downtown ones did fine.
Right.
But the ones, the ones out on the rails, these did not work out right. So, we did not put them out. The ones we had damaged were tore up.
But we'll get that corrected, and we'll be closing out that grant with the, with the state DOT. They'll be glad, after ten years, they'll be glad to have it closed out. We've redesigned the fountain. We've had bids, awarded the contract. They'll start construction of the walkways in the, in Youngheim Plaza and the central fountain at the end of this month. We're going to do part of the sewer connections to help reduce the cost, make it fit budget. But by April, all these projects should be done and ready to go.
Great. Thank you. And do you have a report on the school zone?
We're working on the school zones. Matt's helping with that quite a bit. We've taken a map of the city. We've mapped, we've made sure, we've identified every school zone, both the El Reno Public Schools and the other school districts that are in El Reno. We're going out and inventorying what markings are there, what's lacking, and we're trying to package it up for a Safe Raster School Grant Application through the state Department of Transportation. Hopefully, we'll qualify for that, and if so, then we'll be able to implement a plan to bring all of our school crossing markings throughout the city up to date. So, we're working on that.
Wonderful, thank you. I received a call yesterday from a man in town, and he had some questions and, and I guess didn't know where to bring this. But one of them was about the, he, I guess he read where we had a special meeting about the ninety-day extension for the trash collection. And one of the things that he said was that he, he's ninety, is in his nineties, and wanted to know if there's a way that people who are unable or too old to be able to pull their trash out? Is there some way that they can be identified?
They do, yes.
What happens is, is the trash cans that we have, I'm going to answer that because I'm on the board. The trash cans that we have, if you notice, don't go to Walmart and get the half smiley face, but there's a smiley face. Have you ever seen that on trash cans, on blue trash cans? It's a happy face, just a happy face, a yellow, as your pad, with the two dots and a little happy face on it. And that is identified, and it's always written on their log sheet of who needs assistance. They will go, and you have to go and fill out a form, why you need assistance and what the deal is, and you don't have to have a doctor's note or anything else. If you qualify through their standards, which is very low, that you're older, you can't do it, and then they come by and they put you on their list. When they pick the trash up, Tracy, if you call and say, say you try to trick them, and they come by at eight o'clock in the morning, they pick your trash can up because you're supposed to have it out by seven-thirty, and you pulled it out at nine, you slept in, they can come back and they got a call sheet that they go through, and the driver marks through that sheet of, of basically, you didn't have it pulled out. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So, they mark that, and they keep track of those, and they also have a list of who is handicapped and who needs assistance.
Ray, can you put that, publish that so those who don't know, elderly or handicapped?
I'll tell you what we can do. We can't tell the paper what to do, but I'll tell you what we can do.
We will make that, I will call David, since I'm on the Oklahoma Department of Board. I'll have him bring a standard to it, and we'll share that on our website, everything else, and also share it with Mr. Dyer, if he chooses to do it, we can do that.
Great.
Sure. I'll have a question, though, I'll ask him later.
Okay. Okay, um, and that is, oh, and he did have a concern too, a question about all of the, um, the rerouting of the, all the semis down through the Rock Island and all that, and I said that I know that that's being looked at, but I didn't understand yet how, and...
Can you get those, just tell them to call my office or Matt's, and we'll, we'll talk to them, or we'll get them to the right staff people, and get them squared away, just feel free to be present to them.
Anything else, Tracy?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Move on to, uh, I don't have anything. Executive session. Uh, when you go to executive session for 1819, consider convening an executive session pursuant to Oklahoma State statutes, Title 25, Section 307B1 regarding job performance and employment of City Manager Dan Galloway, and take appropriate action in open session. Number 19, consider convening an executive session pursuant of Oklahoma State statutes, Title 25, Section 307B, discuss tort claim against City of El Reno, uh, receive from Marshall and Matthew Bradley, and recover, uh, reconvene in open session for formal action and said claim. I need a motion, and we go into executive session? I have a motion by Robinson, a second by Cronister. Uh, roll call vote start with Ryder.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Okay, Alan, we... All right, any motion to come back into executive session, uh, out of executive session, into regular session? Got a motion to come back into, into regular session? I have a motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Ryder. Uh, roll call start, Bob. Uh, the paper noted that Mr. Cronster's been sick, he moved, he moved out of here.
Wait for it.
Yeah.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, move on to 18, consider, uh, oh no, let's do 19 first. Consider, uh, convening an exec, out of executive session, and take action on, on, um, the case that was provided for us, Marshall, Matthew, Bailey. I make a motion that we deny claim based on our insurance carry. Second?
Second.
Second by Ryder. Roll call start, Bob. Ballhorn, or Bob? Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we go on to discussion of City Manager Dan Galloway, and take appropriate action in open session. Um, Dan has, uh, explained to us that, uh, that, um, he is going to, uh, we've all discussed, I guess it's been a good conversation, we've discussed for a while, and Dan's done a great job for us here at the City of El Reno, and, and, uh, I tell you, we, we all, uh, knew this day was kinda coming. Dan wants to spend some time with his family, and, and, uh, we understand that completely. Dan's done a great job servicing not all our community, but several communities here in Oklahoma, and just done an outstanding job, and we're really gonna miss Dan, but the good thing about this, Dan is not leaving, um, on, uh, bad terms, he's leaving on probably the highest note you can ever leave as a city manager. Uh, the staff, um, has nothing but total respect, uh, for, for Dan. The city council has nothing but respect and admiration for Mr. Galloway, and appreciation, I think, to staff and council, of all his leadership and knowledge, what he's brought to, to us, and, and I think the citizens have done, um, uh, are, are, the people that met Dan, if you meet Dan, you're just, you're never gonna forget him, he just does a great job. And, and I tell you, he just, he came to us, helping us figure all this out, and, uh, he's just done a great job, and we're, uh, we're pleased he's gonna stay with us. He wants to stay with us and help us, he wants to help staff, he wants to be their part of staff and part of us, and we're, we're pleased that he's gonna do that. It gives all this time, uh, so there's no abrupt quit in what we're doing. So, I'd like to, uh, uh, make a motion that, uh, we, we, uh, change Mr. Galloway's contract to currently what he's getting, starting February, the month of February, February. And I'd like to extend, um, Mr. Galloway of a total, uh, package, uh, of the current compensation that Mr. Galloway gets, that's including all of, uh, his things that are under contract, which is, would be current. We're gonna roll all that into a lump sum of $17,000 per month, per four months. Marshall's got to dictate that out the weekly, divide that out to the weekly, however it goes. Um, and, uh, we want to, uh, extend that out to the $17,000 maximum, uh, including what's currently under the contract allocation that we have. Uh, that will include that amount, of that amount of $17,000 per month. Um, and then we'll also extend the health insurance out, uh, until the end of May, that...
It is now.
Yeah, that we're currently paying, uh, the way it's structured as it is right now. And then, uh, Mr. Galloway will work basically, uh, through April 30th in the office, and then be on, um...
Consulting basis.
Consulting basis, to help us get through the, the things, Roger, uh, till the end of, of May. So that will include the February, March, April, May of the $17,000 margin, we'll have to get through that